Hello, my name is A.J. Tainer. I'm here with the Chillicothe City Tracker. Today is Monday, March the fourteenth, and we are getting ready for another regular city council meeting. And that is getting ready to start here in about two minutes. This is the moment where I really wish I had remembered to bring the, my tripod phone stand thing. Still not as bad as sitting on a chair, though. What? Uh, Stephanie. Thank you, thank you. Yes. I need to redo it, it's just been a minute. We're gonna do a pan around the room. We have some reporters here, city council. Lots of audience participation and members. Lot of people here today. Ask Stephanie if she started the, started the light. Because we can't, we can't stream to the Chillicothe, to the city tracker page until it existed for sixty days. Right? That's what I said. I thought it was like, I thought it was like ten days, not sixty. Say again? Not yet.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council regular meeting. We're meeting at four seven five Western Avenue, Chillicothe, Ohio. I want to thank the Ross County Commissioners for working with us to allow us to use the service center so we have enough room for the folks who wanted to attend this particular meeting. At this point in time, I will ask the clerk to call the attendance rule.
Mr. President, Shoemaker, Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Here.
Barnes?
Here.
McKeever?
Here.
DeMett?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Crowell?
Here.
Creed?
Here.
I was, I was concerned that there wouldn't be a flag in this room. And while it's not very big, we're going, so I'm gonna ask Bennett to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-day receipt rule on the minutes, or on the Bennett's pending agenda.
There's been a motion, is there a second to that motion? Second, if this is Bennett, is it a discussion? Is that for every item on the agenda, or is?
It's the whole.
Further questions? Clerk to call the rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
DeMett?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The minutes from the March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regular meeting have been distributed. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing members, there are a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. DeMett, second by Mr. McKeever. The clerk will call the rules.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
DeMett?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Uh, we'll move now to reports of committees. Development Committee, Mr. DeMett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Development has one item on tonight's agenda, number eight. It's a free. The resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Community Improvement Corporation of Brave Chillicothe, Ross County, including Chillicothe, Ohio, for the lease of the former city pub house in the Octangacy Park and declaring an emergency. And at the appropriate time, I'll make a motion to waive the three-day, three-renew rule on that. And that concludes development.
Thank you. Engineering Committee, Mr. McKeever.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Engineering has nothing on the agenda tonight and nothing new to report.
Thank you. Finance and Technology Committee, Mr. Crowell.
The Finance Committee has no new items on tonight's agenda, but I do want to say that I want to announce that I'll be stepping down from city council at the end of April. My last meeting will be April the twenty-eighth. And it has been a great honor to serve the people of Chillicothe. I would have never dreamed that I would have had this opportunity. You know, we grew up and didn't have usually the, the most money. And my parents both worked hard, and I never won for anything. But this has been such an honor that the people of Chillicothe put their faith in me and support me all these years. And it's really hard to say goodbye. And I want to say thanks to everyone who, for their thoughts and prayers. As you guys may know, I had a heart attack right before New Year's, which is what prompts all this to, to fall into place. But that's meant a lot to me and my family, and thank you. My other thing I want to mention while I have the time is that I want to thank all the people who have turned out the past few weeks to speak with such passion about the homeless camping legislation. It's truly inspiring to see people actively engage in local government. Those who spoke on both sides of the issue showed courage and conviction. And they, as they stood before, not only this body, but the entire public. And that's a tough thing to do. I have learned much from the insights and information that you have presented. I have taken your words to heart. Both sides have given me pause to consider my decisions and their ramifications. And I thank each of you for your time and American spirit. No matter how the vote goes tonight, I ask that each of you that has poured your hearts into this issue to please stay engaged. Council's goal is to help the city and its people. Sometimes we get it right, and sometimes we don't. But the great thing about this country is that we always have a chance to make it right. Work with this council, improve the ordinances, and become active in your local government. Your leadership might be just what we need. As I step away, I have confidence that new leaders will step forward and guide this city and make it the best that it can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dustin.
I really appreciate that.
You have a big heart.
Honestly, thank you so much for that. That, that means a lot. Been a rough go, Bennett, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Councilman, thank you so much. We want everything the best, but you're in the future for sure. And we really appreciate all of the hard work and everything you've done. So I'm gonna try to keep you from crying. Because what I did was, I took a look, it, it looks like you maybe started in two thousand and seven.
That's when I was elected to serve. I actually started in October of two thousand and six, when I was appointed.
Well, in two thousand and seven Netflix began streaming content. Steve Yarz introduced his first iPhone. Keeping Up with the Kardashians premiered.
Yes.
And Barack Obama announced that he's becoming the president of the United States. Listen, sincere, you can't say enough about all you've done, all you continue to do. And just make sure you feel well and take care of your family. We're gonna miss you a lot here in council for sure. Thank you so very much. Let's give him another round of applause. Human Resources Committee, who is paying?
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Dustin, thank you for all of your years and the six years I've been on council.
Thank you for serving with me.
We do have one item on the agenda this evening, it's item number five. This is an ordinance established in the Bay Area, part-time, summer, and all seasonal employees, as well as interns within the Parks and Recreation, Slough Pool, Engineering, Utilities Administration, Service Police, Law Director, Human Resources, and Auditors Departments, City of Chillicothe for calendar year twenty twenty-five. And at the appropriate time, I would like to ask to waive the three-renew rule. We would like to post some of these positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rep Committee, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Rep has one item on tonight's agenda. An ordinance reappropriating a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to replace the previous that authorized all of the parking and renovations. And at the appropriate time, I'll make a motion to waive the three-renew rule. Three-renew rule on that as well. And that concludes Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Safety Service Committee, Mr. Creed.
Mr. President Shoemaker, we have nothing on the agenda tonight. We have had two committee meetings. We had one Thursday over the Rentson Intersections as part of the ACGP grant. Those changes will include, uh, change the intersection of North Mulberry Riverside and Ray Street. Change Water Street to three-lane from Mulberry all the way down to Western Avenue. Changing Octangacy Boulevard from West Water Street to Mill Street to three lanes. Change the intersection at Octangacy and Mill to the Roundabout. And then changes within the park that we recommended. The committee recommended was change every circle to two-way traffic and add four raised with empty crosswalks. And then also to change the layout of Trishler Road southwest of the Arboretum to allow day grass and night grass from the traffic, into the traffic circle in front of the Arboretum. Since that meeting, we got additional information. It was projected that to keep that section of road, it would cost approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we would lose approximately, I think it was thirteen to fifteen trees. The construction manager at risk, we talked to him Friday after that meeting. And he said that cost is going to be upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars to deep that road. And, um, and we would lose at least twenty-seven trees probably more if we were trying to, trying to deep that road. So at the appropriate time, when the legislation gets here, I'm gonna ask to add that to the agenda tonight. And then I'll also ask that we look at amending that to instead remove that road, that section of road for the, because of the cost factor also due to the loss of the trees. So we'll come back to that during the new business course. Tonight, we had a meeting on community guardrails on Carlisle Hill. That was assignment forty-five dash zero three zero. That is going to move forward so that we get those sections of guardrail replaced for something that the residents brought up. That concludes my briefing.
Thank you. Utilities Committee, Mr. McKeever.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Utilities has nothing on the agenda for tonight. However, we had a committee meeting tonight at six forty-five for assignment twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-five zero two six, which is request update ordinance one nine, nine one one point one six point zero six B one. Called recognition of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. Committee unanimously voted to move this on to law retro立法 legislation and be presented to the full council in future. That is my conclusion.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Ms. President.
City Services and Transportation has nothing on the agenda tonight. I do want to thank Councilor Crowell for his guidance and his advice. When I first came on to council, I appreciated working with him, and he's always been very kind. Yep, congratulations. And I have nothing further.
Thank you. Community Affairs Committee, Ms. Bennett.
Once again, I'd like to thank you, Dustin, for working with you patch here and in the past. Community Affairs, uh, earlier, once again, we're going to waiver the five-dollar yard sale permit the week before May twenty-seventh. We all voted that in, and tonight on the agenda, a second item about the ordinance on, uh, chapter five 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 for needing passing in ordinance of the City of Chillicothe. And that's the end of the session.
Thank you. Normally, we would now turn to reported officials, but the mayor had to leave for a moment, so he'll be back a little bit later. So we're gonna move on to audience participation at this point in time.
President Shoemaker, may I? Knowing that we have people that would like to, um, speak for both sides, either opposing or supporting the legislation on the camping, or, or the, yeah, the camping ordinance. And normally, we limit that to fifteen minutes. I would like to make a motion that we allow fifteen minutes for each group, either those opposing or those supporting the ordinance to speak. Everybody extend that up to thirty minutes if it allows.
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, up to fifteen minutes for each side to speak.
Are you gonna help me keep time? I'll try. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Clerk to call the rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
DeMett?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Along with that, now that Dennis passed, it'll be fifteen minutes for each side, both for and opposed, to the public camping ordinance. But also, there is a limit of five minutes for any one individual to speak. So, um, I'll try to keep time here. And so anyone interested in speaking, I don't care whether we go pro or home first, you have the preference, Mr. Creed. Let's have, uh, let's have the people in favor of the ordinance speak first. Name and address please.
John Michael, twenty-two fifty-one, State Road, I still live in county. But I served on this council for twenty-two years, and I was his partner for ten of them, kidding me. Thank you very much for doing, thank all of you for what you do. Takes a lot to make it happen, but I'm sure you all will. I am for this legislation. Being out in county, you really don't find out a lot of these things. I found out about this in the hair split over back of my neck. This is for people of Chillicothe who pay taxes to live here and expect our shelters to be for them. Anyhow, I was Parks Chairman Committee while I was on council for fifteen to twenty years while I was on council. In nineteen eighty-two, the park director asked me to be a member of the park board of the Dec Umson. Nineteen eighty-two, I was still on in two thousand and sixteen. Due to math, that's thirty-four years. I'm here today in the safe capacity, I was here for all thirty-four years associated with park director. Members of council, stick your guns. Pass this legislation tonight because people of this community expect you to do so. Thank you very much, I appreciate everything you all do.
Leading my staff corps, I live five six five West History. And I strongly encourage the council to vote yes tonight to add in chapter five 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 to the Caliphi ordinance of Chillicothe, Ohio. I want to express my thanks to council, President Shoemaker, Ms. Bennett's committee, for airing out this ordinance extensively and to give it all the time that you have. Since twenty twenty-two, we've been dealing with this issue. And we're still, I need everyone in the room to agree that the issues with homeless camping are getting worse and not better. With the Supreme Court, in twenty twenty-four, found unlawful for cities and communities to govern these kinds of actions. So that is not a problem anymore. I would ask those who oppose the legislation politely and not rhetorically that you read the legislation, that you read the ordinance that's being offered. If this fails to pass, the drug-addicted and chronic homeless could miss out on receiving services that will be presented to them by trained law enforcement and offer dozens of solutions to their problems in all the churches, all the communities, all the, all the different organizations that are part of this community who care about them. If it don't pass this, this may be their last chance to receive these kinds of services. If we continue to go on without any kind of legislation, or is this going to end? In February twenty of this year, there were two people who were cited, arrested, subdued for camping inside our post office in downtown Chillicothe. That was February of this year. There's a case number we don't believe. If your family members, your brothers, your sisters, your sons, your daughter, your mom, dad, your aunt, your cousins, whoever is on the verge of homelessness, and for heaven's sakes, buck up and take them into your house. Take them in. This ordinance doesn't prevent people from doing that. If you put this ordinance, then try letting people camp on your property, on your farm, on your church lawn, and see how that works. When this ordinance passes, it will not stop anybody from feeding the homeless. Give to one of these churches, or one of these organizations, one of these, uh, non-governmental organizations, give them your money, or better yet, give them their time to feed these people. Ross County Community Action, in my opinion, is doing an incredible job. And they could use your time and your money. If this ordinance does pass, it will not stop anybody from cleaning up the areas that are, that have become so polluted and so dangerous and so filthy. Join the Continuum of Care Organization for participating in the Earth Day Festival cleanup that they have over here. This ordinance doesn't stop anybody from cleaning up these communities. Whether you employ the homeless to do it, or do it yourself out of your own heart, this ordinance doesn't stop people from cleaning up. A compassionate and lawful city does not let or enable people sleeping on the ground. This ordinance includes answers to all the what ifs, the ands, and the buts with this issue. My gratitude to all those involved in porting this ordinance. And my gratitude to law enforcement for bringing this back to life. And my gratitude to those who put their time, effort, and money and professions towards assisting the homeless. I hope it passes.
My name is Lindsay Castle. I live at one seven six West Water Street, Chillicothe, Ohio. I'm a transplant to Chillicothe, and my family and I moved here from South Dakota by way of Minnesota and Florida. So we have had the opportunity to live in many different states, where we have seen many different solutions for this. I was reading through five five five, and, and I'd like to kind of back up what he said. In reading through it, this is camping ordinance. And it needs to be read as such, and it needs to be addressed as such. Yes, it highlights the fact that we have a homelessness problem, and we have a drug addiction problem. I can speak from my own experience, because a lot of people who come up here, the opposing side doesn't think they understand. I have been homeless, I've been trafficked. I lived my life having to go from one couch to another couch, wondering if I'm gonna have a place to live. But never once was I ever allowed to impede on anyone else's life, their livelihood. I would have to pick up after myself, after my children, after anybody else. And what we're saying, when we say no to five five five, is that any other law-abiding citizen and taxpayer is going to have to foot the bill for somebody else. Yes, they might be struggling, and I understand that. I come from a place of being compassionate to them. But I also know that in my backyard, when we moved here, we had two homeless camps that were there. And now I can't let my children go and play in their backyard without wondering if there's someone camping back there doing something bad. If my children are left alone in their backyard, are they going to be fine? Are they going to find somebody else's feces somewhere? Are they going to find any other paraphernalia from drugs? We moved to Chillicothe because we love this town. We embedded ourselves in this town with two different businesses, with our families, bringing people here because we love it so much. And so I would just request that you please pass this, not just because it can help the homeless that need it, but because as it is written, there is a camp ordinance. We are a NASCAR world heritage. We have people who will come from other countries and other places. And if we don't set a standard for our own people, there is no other standard that anybody else who's coming into this town will have to follow. So I thank you, and I commend you, because there's been so much bullying that has taken place. And each and every one of you, I know how thoughtful you consider this, can take it on a burden that many of the people are the only people. So thank you.
Mike Kay, fifth three eighty Meadow Lane, Chillicothe, Ohio. And I'm here to talk about the first, uh, number one on the agenda. A resolution to declare the necessity of amending section one six three point zero one three and so on and so forth. It all has to come down to the zero point two percent levy for the paving of the streets in Chillicothe. I'm here to let everybody know on council, and everybody in this room, that I'm not gonna vote for that. I'm gonna vote no on that. Everybody comes to the, uh, the lecture that the, uh, the authority to vote on it, I'm gonna vote no. And I'm gonna campaign from now till then. Everybody I can, and it's like this gentleman here, when he was running for city council, he went knock door to door. I'm gonna do the same thing. I have lost sixty-five pounds in the last years already. I can walk. There have been allowed in the last two and a half years a person to run heavy dump trucks by the thousands over some of your city streets that have already been paved within the last two years. And now they are destroyed because of this allowing of these trucks. And I've been fighting this for two and a half years. And, uh, so anyway, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna give the, the city, uh, some adwords, if you should call them. They have done very well with paving the city, you know, city streets and, and alleys. And I, I think they've done really, really well with that. I just commend you for that. I've been in many cities, uh, Michigan, Ohio, um, and many areas. And I've not seen so good, uh, work on city streets that have been done here in this town in the last few years. And I understand that we were a point two percent needed to keep continuing to, uh, take care of the streets. I get it. But there have been, I'll employ a guess, Mr. Mayor, in the last two and a half years, maybe two hundred thousand dollars of streets has been ruined by this one guy who has run thousands of trucks over these streets. And it's the streets I live on. And so I'm here today for that reason. So let all of you know, and I'm glad you're all here, because I've been here at many meetings, and they could tell you, and I had no one here, nobody.
I've seen you.
I'm glad you're here. He's trying to shut me up a few times. Anyway, that's, that's my decision. I want to vote no on that, I think I'll let you vote no to that.
Seven minutes left for the folks who want to speak in favor of the camping, the public camping ordinance. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Alison Henderson, one thirty-seven South Peach Street. I want to commend all of you for all of your work that you have done on council thus far, the new, the outgoing, the veterans. I'm very well aware of how difficult it has been to handle that at times. I also want to commend those who wrote this, of this legislation, wrote this ordinance. The, as this court mentioned, um, it was so beautifully written to help folks who need that help. He mentioned the continuum of care, which I have been a part of in the past and continue to donate toward. Being able to... to donate toward, and being able to reach out to these folks, to have those extra bodies reaching out to these people with this ordinance, I think is just absolutely incredible. I urge you to vote yes to it. Everything that's written into it, just, I can't emphasize enough, it was beautifully written, and I think it is a fantastic work for our city to help, as some folks had mentioned, help the taxpayers who haven't utilized what they pay for, but also, again, to help those who need help. And I urge you to vote in support of this item. Thank you.
Seven minutes left for everybody in favor of the ordinance.
I'm Dr. Anthony Phillips. I reside at Langford, Applewood Drive, Chillicothe. Couple years ago, I was on that side, the same issue was up, and I just, I have a couple observations and concerns. Number one, I'm in support of passing chapter five five five. During that time I was on council, this issue was brought up, there was a couple of observations that really concerned me. Number one, in all of the opposition of this ordinance at the time, not one positive thing was said towards our police officers. I remember that distinctly because it really bothered me. I see a couple in the back, in uniform, I know a couple others that are not in uniform. Not only was nothing kind said, many unkind things were said. In other words, our police officers were characterized, and every intention they had was nefarious. They were going to lock everybody up, they have hatred towards homeless people. I thought that was disgusting myself, okay? Thank you, officers, for what you do. You're greatly appreciated. What bothers me more than anything is the negative energy that's free. Is there a happy medium somewhere? Is there any equity that our city should have in upholding law and order? According to the liberal agenda that we all see, let's not kid ourselves into the anti-Liberian society, from the federal, state, and local level, be proud of it if you're going to own it, okay? Lawlessness, open borders.
How can you say that?
Go seek for us.
Yeah, speak for yourself.
We live in the information age. I'm going to be a long time. If you're proud of your agenda, at least own it. If you act as if you don't live in the information age, you're constantly watching every city, every protest all around the country, and it's hatred that supports us. What I have no respect for was when somebody projects a lie, you don't like it when somebody projects a lie towards you. I don't like it when somebody projects a lie, and conservatives are filled with hate. That's the opposite. We can see what the truth is. So thank you for your service, the majority, in my opinion, of our citizens, one of this past. Thank you.
The time has expired for those in favor of the ordinance. We're going to move to fifteen minutes for those who are opposed to the ordinance on public camping. We've got fifteen minutes left for the folks who are opposed to the ordinance, and they're going to have a chance to speak at this point in time, okay? So it'll be fifteen minutes. Please try to speak up. We wanted to make sure we had room for everybody in here, so your time's not going to start until I sit back down. I don't believe my watch is accurate. We'll give you fifteen minutes, the folks who are opposed to the ordinance at this point in time, okay? So you go ahead and proceed, you can turn, speak to those folks, and it makes it easier for people to hear.
Okay. So I'm Catherine Stevens. I reside at five eleven North Ice Street. I do have a vote, but the five 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 will be passed. The reason I'm being is, one of these individuals, everybody says that this ordinance has solutions, it does not, it just has ticketing. If we add something that addresses the mental health, the substance abuse, the actual housing, something to put them, that might be a different story. Maybe we could discuss it. But at the same time, when we're looking at this ordinance, and we're looking at the individuals in this community, when we say community, we look at everybody as a whole. We shouldn't be separating, we shouldn't be saying, well, you're a liberal, or you're this, or you're that. It shouldn't be about that. It should completely be about what's best for the community, what is going to help our community, that means every individual in this city. I myself stopped by a police officer and asked for resources for somebody that I knew that was homeless. They didn't have it. It was stated at one council meeting that they do. They do not. They call one person, it's available eight to four Monday and Friday. There's nothing else possible for that. We're sitting and spending approximately fifty-eight dollars a day for them to sit in jail, which they don't have the money to pay. They don't have the money to pay their fines, they don't have the money to pay their tickets. They don't even know when they're getting their next drink, food, anything. So if you want to fix and solve the solution, table it, come up with other solutions to add to the ordinance, you know, maybe find, or spend that fifty-eight dollars a day and put toward the homeless shelter to make a bigger space for them to go, so they actually have resources like case management and ability to find jobs, or re, you know, figure out something else that can continue to suppress them when they're already suppressing enough, doesn't add to the solution. We have to be a community and work together to find a solution to this, and this isn't it. To be honest, they've already removed them all out of the city anyways. They've pushed them to the outskirts, and I know that because I went with the continuum of care to see these people and take resources to them myself. So before we make last decisions and vote yes on an ordinance that doesn't help these individuals and adds more suppression and adds more tax dollars to our city, we need to really, really thank you for continuing to do this. So thank you.
I live at forty-four South Peach Street, and I don't think those who are concerned with the liberal issues, humanitarian issues. We don't have the resources to take care of this. We don't have the resources to take, to enforce littering and, I mean, we have yards. If you take a look around, one of our largest corporations has boarded up buildings on the main street, and trash everywhere that is not taken care of.
I'm on now.
And that is not from, those are residential areas. We're talking about, we're not talking about your yards, we're talking about public spaces. And if we move them out, they're just going to become our county's supported property, somebody else's. I agree that we need, we need some rules and regulations, I sure do, and I don't think, most of us don't feel, or I don't feel, that, I feel like the police want to help, but where are they going to take them? And if they have a place to go in Sunday two hours, wouldn't they already be there? I'm all about keeping our place, keeping our litter picked up, but I'd also love to see us work together to find housing and support and work together. This should not be a division. This should not be. It should be something that brings your community together to help, they're human. We house our inmates. We house folks all the time, but these, we can't say that they're all drug addicts, because we don't know that. Because do you know them? You cannot judge a man or a woman by their dress or where they live.
That's right.
So I, my suggestion, council, is support you to table this, bring it back after we know we have those resources. We can have hundreds of plans, but this is not, this is not a liberal thing for me or a conservative. It's a humanitarian, it's the right thing to do to table this. Thank you.
My name is the Reverend Terry Williams. I reside at forty-seven and a half East Main Street here in the city of Chillicothe. You already know how I feel about this legislation, because I've told you about it not only this year, but when it came up several years ago. So I'm going to take some time to do and address some misinformation that's been put out here today. We heard from Mr. McCord that he thanked law enforcement for bringing this forward. Law enforcement in this city's been clear, they didn't ask for it, and they don't support it. A law enforcement official in charge of our city has said he worries it's a liability, that it's an unfunded mandate, he doesn't have enough room to store all the property. He's got all kinds of issues with it. Rest assured, law enforcement didn't bring this forward. We heard from Ms. Fossil, the concern, of course, the concern that this would be a compassionate bill, a care-filled bill. I have looked for me, in the root of my morality, up and down the pages of scripture, and haven't been able to find once where it says, blessed are the ones who only give us a minor misdemeanor. Opening this up in such a way that it targets people on the street in a much broader way than we do now. It's not moral, it's not ethical. For me, I am concerned when we hear people talk about things like procedure in council. Certainly, Mr. Churchill worked hard and long in this place, and I think he would be frustrated to learn, what we have learned through public records requests, that there has been discussion in the committee. Before the committee brought it into public, they had private conversations documented and distributed via email, in violation of the open meetings law. That is a concern that will continue in this place, now that we've been able to find it. My larger concern, though, is the question that was raised by Dr. Phillips of the agenda. What agenda do we have in this place? What agenda do we find being displayed here? For me, the agenda is rooted in this week. We are in the midst of holding week. For those of us who claim the faith of Jesus, here we are one day after Palm Sunday. Two days yet until the Passover, and in scripture, where do we find that? We find it in Matthew twenty-five, that's the place in scripture where we are this week. Matthew twenty-five that says, "You, you cared for Jesus as you cared in this moment for each of the least of these, that you were able to feed those who were hungry, to get drink to those who were thirsty, to welcome the stranger. You, when you cared enough, when you cared enough, to come to those who were sick and give them care, to clothe those who were naked and to visit those in prison, you did it also to Christ." I don't see anywhere in here, we hear a lot of talk about the agenda of compassion, I don't see anywhere in here where there's more compassion now than our officers offer right now, because they do offer extreme compassion and care for the people right now in this community. What they don't need is additional regulations, unfunded mandates, a law that's going to be challenged in court, and continuing concern in this place around what in the world this council's going to do to actually fix those problems. We've got an unfunded community resource center, we now have an unfunded mandate that's going to come down on the police, and this has come from a place that cannot be unrun. This has come from the root of corruption in this city. Backdoor deals and violations of the Open Meetings Act that are going to come to light. I hope that you have the good sense in this place not to make this kind of mistake. If you do, know that we are prepared, the citizens of Chillicothe, to run a referendum or initiative petition on this. I would invite all people in this room to come out to the initiative petition or referendum training that's going to be held on the twenty-first of April, Monday the twenty-first of April, five P M. to six thirty P M., five fifty Buckeye Street, at the north side branch of the library, because when you decide to put bad legislation on the books, we have a responsibility to take it away. I hope that you all find yourself in this place with enough compassion and enough sense not to make one of the biggest mistakes that this council could make in its history. Thank you.
I've been to eight meetings, so I don't know this point.
You for having been to other meetings, but not for tonight.
Okay, okay. Four minutes. First, I want to say that Amy Pitts, three 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 West Peach Street, this is my seventh meeting that I have been to on this ordinance. I would like to say that I wasn't here for the first ordinance, but I've been to almost all the meetings for this one, and I have yet to hear one negative comment about our police force from either side. I just want to put that out there. I'm a grandeur of the public. And I know that the officers here, and I know that several of them, I won't ask for all of them, are already handing out this resources and this information to our homeless. Since the beginning of this, I've been trying to answer the question, why and what? Why are we doing this, and what does it solve? I've had a conversation with Dan Dement, and he shared with me the concerns about the litter, and the safety issues down by the floodway. I went to the Ross Continuum Care meeting last week, and thank you, Mr. McKeever. I brought it up and asked, why, what, why, what? Mr. McKeever was there, and Kevin was there, and thank you so much for sitting in the hot spot and sharing with us. We shared, we have all these constituents that he has to answer to, and they were concerned about being places in the city park, down by the river, along with floodway, and we don't have any signage. When you go to Ross County Parks, or you go to state parks, there's signage that says the park is closed from ten P M. to six A M. And I was like, well, this is just about signage, can we get some signs? And you have to have an ordinance to get signs. So then I said, well, couldn't we have a compromise where we maybe rewrite the ordinance, and we were able to get some signage that says, you can't be hanging out in the city park from ten P M. to six A M., and table the ticket department? Everybody, we've been to so many meetings, and all the experts are sitting out here, all the people who work with the homeless people, who this is their job, this is what they feel compassionately about, they spoke week after week after week, and they are all opposed to this ordinance. Like, having the ticket aspect to this, the fee, I know that seems like, well, being nice is just a little ticket, but if you don't have money, it's nicer than what it was, you still can't pay the ticket. And then you can have a warrant for your arrest, and eventually you can end up in jail, and it still doesn't solve anything. And the homeless aren't hanging out in the city anymore. We've pushed them out. I know, because I've been out there and I've seen it. The litter was brought up twice. I just want to tell you, we are working, we are starting a four oh one C. to address any of the litter issues along the water, so that will address the flood wall issue. I had a great conversation with the transportation, or the sanitation department. We're trying to find spots throughout the city where the homeless can bag up their trash, and they can put it there, and they can do a swing by and pick it up. What? Okay. And I am in the process of organizing, I have a huge group of volunteers, and we are going to tackle up an encampment, which all, until I have this, we felt that I won't. But we do, we are doing things. Everyone out here is doing things, and I just ask you, please, let's listen to the experts, okay? Let's revamp this, and I would love to see you start a new committee called, how do we help the marginalized people in our community? And I think if you do that, because there's already, because we've drug this out, what's so great about that is we all know each other now, like, we've had some great people through this process. I know, and we're committed to doing really great things, and if you can work with us, then maybe we won't even need those signs. Thank you.
Is there any other issue that anybody wants to speak on, on the audience participation? As long as it's not about that.
I got you.
Good deal.
Uh, my name is Hannah Siders. I live at four fifteen Longback Road. Um, I'm, I'm gonna try to speak loud enough for you guys, but, um, so I have four children that I did not birth, but I feed them, and, you know, mama bear would maul, maul you over them, you know? Um, I, over the last few weeks, and this has been an ongoing issue over the last several years, I love to take them to the park. They always ask, you know, "T T, can we go to the park? Dad, can we go to the park?" I love taking them to the park. I love getting them exercise, I love getting them out, breathing in and, and fresh air and the sunshine. But what I don't like is when I take my kids to the park and I continuously see racial slurs and swastikas and, and all that sound, spray paint all over the equipment. So I don't know what the protocol is on that. I don't know if there's someone that I can speak to, if we can make it happen that maybe parents like myself, and, and, you know, the kid's dad, and anyone else would be maybe allowed to at least paint over it until the, the, the parks and rest can take care of it. I've spent hours scrubbing the N-word. I've spent hours scrubbing swastikas. I've spent hours scrubbing off pictures, images of genitalia. You know, I don't, that's not something that I want, I don't want my eight-year-old coming up to me and, and, "What does that mean?" You know, and I'm willing to explain it, but they shouldn't have to see that when they're trying to play and be kids. I, I feel like that should be taken care of. I feel like, you know, I, I don't, and, and I don't know, this, this is a touchy thing to figure out, but you guys, you guys can figure it out. And can we maybe, maybe where if someone's just repainting over it real quick, or, or maybe, you know, provides the parents that wanna sign up and volunteer to clean off the graffiti off the playground with, with whatever, to scrub it off. I, I just, I, I would much rather spend my several hours down at the park with my kids, playing with my kids, and not spending several hours scrubbing until my arms wanna fall off. So, that is all.
So I just want to, I'll try to speak up to you guys. I'm sorry to interrupt this.
Then, then the girl stole me.
Oh, welcome to Opian three eighty-four East Water Street, Chillicothe, Ohio. I just wanted to take a minute to express deep gratitude and admiration for someone who has quietly and consistently poured his heart into our community for many years, Councilman Dustin Pearl. Dustin's resignation marks the end of an era in Chillicothe. And while we understand and respect his need to step away and focus on his health, it doesn't make this farewell any easier. His decision comes after suffering a heart attack at the end of last year, a reminder to all of us, the unseen weight that public service carries. The strength it takes to step back from something you love for the sake of healing and family speaks volumes about the kind of man Dustin is. Thoughtful, selfless, and always leading with heart. Over the years, Dustin has been a voice of reason, a calming presence, and a tireless advocate for the people of this city. He never sought, sought the spotlight for the sake of recognition. He simply showed up and did the work with empathy and care. His absence will be felt, not just in his chamber, but throughout the city. His legacy won't be defined by a title or even the number of years he served. It will live on every day in the lives that he touched and the quiet progress he helped make possible, and in the example he set for all of us who believe in public service for the right reasons. Dustin, thank you. Thank you for your years of commitment, every late night and early morning, and for the sacrifices that you made for our city.
This way.
Yeah, one minute, but no, I'm sorry.
You know what? Even before this gentleman, and I, the only people in the audience, my name is John Becker, and I, near Love Street, Department Three Zero Seven, Chillicothe. There was a woman called Connie Riley, and this fellow knows who I'm talking about. Uh, she was a mainstay. I don't think she ever walked the boat. I came up and was, this was like, oh, my goodness, they're not gonna, they're gonna hate me or something. And you know what? I got used to it a little bit after time, partly because of calm leadership like this. But that's all why I'm up here. Specifically as to the committee report that Mr. Creed gave, uh, as to the parking changes, and the proposed changes in the park, I don't know if we're planning to try to have that be voted on tonight. I think that it should wait at least to one reading, so that people have an opportunity to speak about it. I, I have no intention of waiting for a three-reading rule on that.
Okay. I just wanna ensure, you are adding it to the agenda, though, as the first three items?
I'm going to ask, yes, I'm going to ask to do that.
I think I believe that I would probably be in favor of it, clearly speaking, because I'd like to review this meeting. And I know that there are plenty of issues against some of the changes, but I'd like to have, be sure they have another chance to speak about it if they choose to, um, so that they can make their concerns known in a second part. Some of these people are on the other side of the political spectrum. That's okay. I want their voices heard, because that's why we're here. That's what's important. And I think that's what we're all trying to do tonight, and perhaps in the future.
Thank you. If there was no objection by council, I'd like to move back to allow the mayor to get his report, since it was asked before, for, for time being. So, I'm turning over to the mayor.
Thank you, President Schumaker. I'll be brief. Uh, just voice, uh, a few, um, items on tonight's agenda. I'll start with item one, um, which is the third reading related to paving levy. Just offer my, uh, support for the passage of that item tonight. Uh, item two, which is third reading, uh, we've had a lot of discussion on tonight. I don't have anything new to offer that you haven't heard from me before, or you haven't heard in public tonight, but I will voice, uh, my opposition to that legislation, and stand in support of the chief of police, who has voiced his concerns about this legislation. I'd urge council, uh, to consider that tabling that was raised, um, and consider an approach that might be more balanced. Uh, on item five tonight, uh, I would request the waiver of the three-rerule, uh, so we can get seasonal folks hired. Uh, and item six, I would also request the waiver of the three-rerule, uh, we have some dangerous structures that need to come down. And I understand that there might have been a couple items added, maybe added, uh, one of those related to, I think, a paving project in the park. Uh, I would ask for support, the waiver of that, three readings, uh, tonight as well. And I would move my report there. Thank you.
Next, we move to old business. Is there any old business to come before?
President Schumaker, I'd like to be heard on that business.
Yes.
Just regarding, uh, legislation that's before the council over tonight. And to make some clarifications, that was, uh, statements made earlier. It's in July of twenty twenty-four, the Law Director's Office is contacted by the Chillicothe Police Department, seeking guidance, legal guidance, on signs, or posting of signs due to the department receiving complaints about camps. They inquire about using the current ordinance, which was criminal trespass of five forty-one oh five, flood wall, stone embankment trespass, five forty-one oh five one, and littering, which is five twenty-one oh eight, of our codified ordinance. Which these are third or fourth degree misdemeanors. The only posted signage, or, or, that city had available, and hasn't available, is the city property hours and overnight parking, which is two, or one twenty-three oh six, which indicates the park is closed between ten P and six A. Violation of these hours would have to be charged as criminal trespass or flood wall trespass, and do not address the complaints about the camps. The Law Director's Office reviewed these ordinances, then carefully read the City Grants Pass versus Johnson. Next was to review the legislation that was passed or pending in the city of Mentor, which is in Ohio, city of New Philadelphia, city of Wilmington, and the city of Newark. Information from those proposed adopted ordinances was used to draft the camping legislation that was presented to council. In January, the Community Affairs Committee was given the twenty-four one-one-seven, which is the anti-camp. There were, there've been two committee meetings, input from Mayor Feeney, Chief Myers, members of the Ross County Continuing Care and Homeless, local pastors, and the public. In March, there was a review session and two readings before council. Public input was heard on this legislation. Some of those in attendance were very critical of the law director and the, and city council, claiming there was little to no research done crafting this legislation, which is not true. Council was accused of not listening, being a brick wall, which is not true. We sat in silence listening to you voicing your support or opposition of this legislation. On March twenty-third, Police Chief Myers released a letter stating he would like to review the proposed ordinance from an enforcement perspective. This has been an ongoing assignment since January. Chief Myers was present at the first committee meeting at the request of committee chairperson's demand. He felt if signage was posted, they could or would use the criminal trespass, criminal trespass ordinance to enforce. Chief was present at the review session on March the third. He sat in the back of the audience and said nothing, offering no enforcement perspective at that time. March twenty-fourth, Councilman Creed sent an email to Chief Myers about his concern in his letter, asking if he addressed that with the law director, and what was her response? As of March thirty-first, Councilman Creed sent a follow-up email to Chief Myers, again, asking for a response from the law director. To date, Chief Myers has not responded to Councilman Creed's request. There have been local experts who have come before this council and spoke in opposition to this legisla- legislation, stating this will harm those individuals wanting assistance. This legislation is not directed towards those individuals. The local experts have acknowledged there are those who have and will refuse assistance. It is directed toward those who do not want to utilize all the available resources that this community has to offer. If this legislation passes tonight, it would fall to the police chief and staff to develop a policy and procedure. This would give his officers direct guidance on proper application of his ordinance. Over the past month, council has received emails and engaged face-to-face conversations with local residents, some in support and some in opposition. In an attempt to intimidate this council to table this legislation, there have been opposition posts on social media stating council members are spineless, soulless, minimally representative of human, and quote, "This council is a disgusting excuse for humanity," end of quote. The publishing of council members' home addresses, personal phone numbers, and personal email addresses on social media, where our council email addresses are published on the city's website and email correspondence can be mailed to council chambers. The attempt to disrupt the council meeting on March twenty-fourth, when someone called the Chillicothe Fire Department to report an occupancy violation. Now, in closing, I believe we must prioritize public safety and ensure public spaces are accessible to everyone, as people have the right to walk or enjoy time in our parks. Camping on public property can create unsanitary and unhealthy conditions for both campers and those who encounter them. Thank you.
There's more old business to come before you. Here and then, we'll move on to petitions and correspondence.
President?
I was going, wait, you use, do that after the correspondence.
President Schumaker, I have correspondence just handed to me. What meetings?
Can I have five more minutes?
I have three items that were submitted for correspondence. The first is a petition in support of proposed ordinance five-five-five. Attached are petitions, which were gathered by twenty-five local individuals and were signed by over four hundred residents of Chillicothe and Ross County. The petition states, "We be undersigned or in favor of the proposed ordinance five-five-five, which prohibits camping on public property in the city of Chillicothe. We ask that Chillicothe City Council pass this legislation sincerely through labor and then..." Item number two that I have is a liquor license, and it is a D-five and D-six permit for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC, doing business as Red Lobster, number seven zero five, ten seventy-nine, York Bridge Street, Chillicothe, four five six oh one. If there is no issue with that, I'll sign it and send it in to the Division of Liquor Control. And item number three that I have is another petition, and it is in opposition. It is an email from Stop Five-Five-Five. Clerk Moss and President Schumaker, please receive the attached communication from Stop Five-Five-Five, Chillicothe, "The grassroots coalition of Chillicotheans committed to opposing the proposed Chapter Five-Five-Five anti-homeless legislation currently being considered by Chillicothe City Council. It is our intent that this communication be received as correspondence under Rule Twenty-seven of the Rules of Counsel." And the first, what that says at the beginning is, "The following listed individuals have consented to being publicly named and have been verified through by privately providing contact information. We are individuals who either reside in, work in, or do business with the city of Chillicothe, and who oppose the proposed Chapter Five-Five-Five legislation passed by the Community Affairs Committee, which is currently before Chillicothe City Council's for consideration. Each individual listed below has read the language of the proposed Chapter Five-Five-Five legislation and has found at least one element of this legislation unacceptable." Thank you.
And we will have, we will have those available if anyone makes the request. We'll have, excuse me, the petition for and the petition against, so people can see it. Anyone who'd like to get a copy, let us know, and can get that. There was also, um, there were, as was mentioned, there were a lot of emails, both for and against this legislation. Uh, there were, uh, we did pursue some objections to, um, the manner in which I handled the audience participation portion in the last meeting. And, uh, more importantly, there were several emails regarding proposed roadway changes around the park. And so, trust me, we've got plenty of emails, both pro and con, about that particular issue. Uh, I think that covers everything that we've received, and now we're gonna move to new business.
President Schumaker, I would like to add the ordinance approving the modification of the pedestrian roadway plans for the road network changes in and around the park as part of the Appalachian Community Grant Program, and wait, wait the three-day receipt.
Second, by you, Bennett, and report the call roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Feeney?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McPiver?
Yes.
Demenz?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
And it will be end.
Okay.
Anything else relative to new business? The only thing I want to mention is that Yellow Day is coming up on May second. Downtown businesses and numerous schoolchildren will be downtown. Uh, and that's to show kindness to everyone. All the businesses will be putting up signs, giving out things. And it's a really, really important day. And if any of you can, can be there, it's well worth your time to, to make the effort to see all those young folks that are out there, and just trying to say good things to each other, and try to lift each other up. So it's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful day. And if you've got time, I would, I would encourage you to be there to do that. Any more new business? Here and then, we'll move on to the, um, reading of ordinances.
Thank you, President Schumaker. We have ten items on our agenda this evening. Item number one is the third reading of a resolution declaring the necessity of amending sections one-six-three point zero one-three F, one-six-three point zero three, one-six-three point zero eight, and one-six-three point one-six of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe in order to renew the... in order to renew the existing .2% levy that expires on December 31st, 2025, at the same rate and for exclusive use toward the continuation of street paving, repairs, and improvements for a 10-year period beginning January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2035, resolving that said amendment should be placed before the electors at the election to be held on November 4th, 2025.
And the court will call a roll relative to that ordinance.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted, next ordinance.
Item number two is the third reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 555, prohibiting camping to the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio.
The court will call a roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
No.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
No.
Creed?
Yes.
The vote is five, five to four in, or five to three, excuse me, in favor of the ordinance, so the ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance.
Item number three is the third reading of an ordinance which are creating $36,000 to cover the city's cost for the Ohio Department of Taxation deficiency balance from the municipal net profit returns in 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Court will call a roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted, the next ordinance.
Item number four is the third reading of a resolution authorizing the disposal of municipal property that is not needed for public use or is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was required in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15, by way of auction and declaring an emergency.
Court will call a roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted, next ordinance.
President Shoemaker, I would like to make the request of the ultimate three read rule.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Creed. The court will call a roll relative to the waiver of the three read rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The three read rule was waived, the clerk will call the roll relative to the ordinance.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, next ordinance.
Item number six is the first reading of an ordinance appropriating $96,000 to pay for the demolition of six houses within the city that have been damaged by fire.
The ordinance will move to the, to the next agenda.
Item number seven is the first reading of an ordinance establishing rates of pay and other economic benefits for non-bargaining employees within the Safety Service Departments and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance will move to the next agenda.
Item number eight is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, of Greater Chillicothe, Ross County, including Chillicothe, Ohio, for the lease of the former city pump house and the Yacht and G Park and declaring an emergency.
President Shoemaker, I would like to make a motion to waive the three read rule on this item.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Preston. The clerk will call the roll relative to the waiver of the three read rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The three read rule is waived, the clerk will now call the roll relative to the ordinance.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, next ordinance.
Item number nine is the first reading of an ordinance reappropriating $190,000 to complete the previously authorized Ballmer Field parking lot renovation project.
President Shoemaker? Mr. Demet?
I would like to make a motion to waive the three read rule on this item twelve.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Crowe. Court will call a roll relative to the waiver of the three read rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Waive of the three read rule is adopted, and the court will call the roll relative to the ordinance.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. We have one more option.
Item number 10 is the first reading of an ordinance approving the modification of proposed roadway plans for the road network changes in and around Yacht and G Park as part of the Appalachian Community Grant Program.
The ordinance will move to the next agenda. Is there any other business coming before council? Here again, I just think once more, I thank Councilman Crowe for his service, because it has been above and beyond, and what he wants to do. And now, this is the last act of Bill Olegio. Move to adjourn this evening.
Make that motion.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Demet. The court will call a roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Demet?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Once again, my name is AJ. Today is Monday, March, March the, no, Monday, April the 14th. And that, this concludes today's regular council meeting. Thank you.